Mr. Youngker?
Yes.
It's the time and place for the conditional use hearing for the Huntley Energy Exploration LLC Plutus Well Pad, Sido Tank Pad, Plutus to Apollo B Pipeline. We're going to follow the same order. Anybody who wants party status who hasn't already completed them, they are up here. At this time, we have three forms, which is protect Elizabeth Township, Kristen and Eric Ash, and Mr. Ted Bryce. Any objection to party status of those, Mr. Youngker?
Not to protect Elizabeth Township, based on my prior discussion with Mr. Hamilton. We do not object to their participation in terms of the Ashes, Bryce would just like representation as to their location in proximity to the Plutus and Sido.
Mr. Ash?
So, we are at 1200 Fallen Timber Road, which is the corner of Nichols Hill and Fallen Timber. We are on the proposed trucking route for Plutus B and within approximately a mile till a mile and a half from the Plutus P well, Plutus well pad.
Are you currently leased to Huntley?
We are not.
And it's, you know, what you're saying, it's between a mile and a mile and a half.
It's probably closer to a mile and a half.
Okay, and that's your residence?
That's correct.
I'm just entering a general objection that it's not in close proximity to the well pad, and just because truck traffic does go by certain people, it does not give standing in its own context.
Given the, not necessarily the proximity, but knowing the specific truck routes are going to be used here and being familiar with the location on brand, Mr. Ash, Mr. and Mrs. Ash, party status at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryce?
I'm assuming I know the answer, because I'm not as close as where he is, and I'm on the ultimate route, I'm not on the beginning route throughout the whole situation. So, my concern was, I was asked at the beginning of if I'm going to sign up, I have to sign up for both of them. I was under the impression that because that's what's going on, I said I would hold off some questions for the second time around, and thinking that based upon what was going on, that standing was the standing in both situations, sort of held up my questioning the first time around. So, I'm sort of at a loss of how this whole thing is going to go down, because I didn't sort of, I walked into something that I didn't see coming.
Mr. Bryce, would you like party status in this case?
I would like to have.
Okay. Mr. Youngker, and you testified you're further away than a mile and a half from the site?
Yeah, so I can't, I can't, it's not like I went out and measured exactly what the distances are, but I would imagine I'm more than a mile and a half.
And it's the alternate route?
It's just for the alternate route.
And the alternate route is just for the big rig movements, not the...
Big rig movements, correct.
Okay, now we just enter the same objection to party status.
Mr. Bryce, knowing that you were along the alternate route, I do believe there is some impact to you, so I will grant you party status.
Thank you.
Mr. Youngker, you can proceed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rakunis. Once again, my name is Bob.
Oh, wait, before I put, let me put this on the record, excuse me. Again, this is a conditional use hearing, there will be no vote taken tonight, this is a public hearing on the conditional use application. This has been recommended by the Townships Planning Commission as well. So, proceed, Mr. Youngker.
Thank you, Mr. Rakunis, for the background. Do you intend to enter the sign-in forms as Exhibit A?
I will, they will be Township A along with the applications for party stats, that will all be entered into as Township Exhibit A.
Thank you once again, I'm Robert Max Youngker, outside counsel with BAFTC, here on behalf of Huntley Energy Exploration LLC for the application for the Plutus Sido Pad and Plutus to Apollo B Pipeline. I have my notes in front of me, if I look down and read this, I know we have three moving parts here, so I don't mean to be rude, but I do want to make sure I cover everything with a brief introduction. On September 14th, Huntley filed conditional use application to construct and operate the Plutus well pad, the Sido tank pad, and the Plutus to Apollo B pipeline. Proposed facilities are located on the McCall property, McCall's are present here this evening, at 1665 Fallen Timber Road. The parcel area is 54.5 acres and is located in the R2 zoning district. Oil and gas well site pipelines and oil and gas operations are permitted in the R2 district as a conditional use, subject to the requirements of the current zoning ordinance, which is ordinance number 896. At the time of the application back in September, the township was considering an ordinance amendment which would have allowed freshwater impoundments, including tanks, in the R2 district as a conditional use. Although Huntley still hopes that the township will adopt an ordinance in the near future, since it has not done so, Huntley has withdrawn the portion of its application for the Sido tank, although it is still applying for approval of the Sido tank pad, which will be used for general oil and gas operations. And should the township change its ordinance in the future, Huntley may apply for approval of the Sido tank for freshwater storage in the future. The three components of this application, as I mentioned, are, one, first, the Plutus well pad and wells. This is an unconventional well pad, and when I say unconventional, it doesn't mean there's anything unusual about it, it just means that we are reaching unconventional shale formations that were previously inaccessible. This will include both vertical and horizontal laterals that will be hydraulically fractured. For the wells, HECs has applied for and obtained eight well permits from the Department of Environmental Protection. The permanent pad will be the size of 340 feet by 500 feet. There will be a gravel road access that will be 24 feet wide and 1,300 feet long, with the initial 50 feet or so paved. The second component of the application, as I mentioned, is the Sido pad. Right now, it is proposed to be a gravel pad, 300 feet to 400 and by 425 feet. The access to this pad will be from the Plutus access road. There will not be an additional curve cut or an additional access point off of the public street to access the Sido pad. It will be used for material and equipment storage in the interim until we decide to move forward with an approval for freshwater storage tanks. Finally, the smallest part of the application is the Plutus to Apollo pipelines. Why are there three components to this application, you may ask? Well, in the ESCGP 2, which is the Erosion Sediment Control General Permit Series 2 issued by the Department of Environmental Protection, has both the Plutus and the Sido pads combined. It was approved on September 27, 2018. The Plutus to Apollo pipeline is also subject to BDP approvals. That was approved on May 8, 2018, with minor modifications on September 20, 2018. Whenever we're talking about well pads and at some point freshwater tank pad, the topic of water sourcing is important and is part of our presentation. Our original and our current plan is to purchase water from the PA American, pipe it to the site in temporary above ground water lines, and supplement as needed with truck traffic. Our desired long-term plan is that if the ordinance is modified, we would like to withdraw water from the Yawkagany River, pipe it to the tank on the Sido pad once that is approved, and then pipe to Plutus in the previously approved Apollo B pad. This is the ideal situation, it avoids additional truck traffic, and it provides for a shorter hydraulic fracturing completions period. However, for the purposes of this application this evening, the water sourcing will be PA American and supplemental trucking. As Mr. Rakunis mentioned, on November 20th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application and its three component parts. I will have the representatives here this evening from Huntley identify themselves, as well as Mr. Daley from CTC at this time, to be sworn in as well.
Vance Hazard.
Kimberly Price.
Kyle Shire.
Ryan Daley.
And as I did in the previous Apollo B hearing, we do have, as provided as Exhibit 1, is our application filed back in September. It does have a number of sub tabs and categories, which includes everything you could possibly need for this application, including the conditional use application, the project narrative, the conditional use plan, layout plan, the ESCGP 2 well permit application, the pipeline permit application, the drill permits and applications, and the preparedness, prevention, and contingency plan, the master emergency response plan, the site-specific emergency response plan, the BADEP bond transmittal, deeds, acknowledging the property interest of Huntley, the road maintenance and repair letter, the haul route map, the highway occupancy plan, the lighting plans, the DEP water management plan amendment, a request for approval of previously approved alternative waste management practices application, sound study, the emergency responder letters, and verification of receipt of the emergency response plan. That was what was submitted as part of the application we identified as Exhibit 1. In the binders that have been handed out this evening, we only have a couple of additional exhibits to add. The table of contents here identifies the September 14th application as Exhibit 1. Exhibit 2 is a site photo. Exhibit 3 is a November 7, 2018 letter from CTC. Exhibit 4 is the photometric plans, and finally Exhibit 5 is the Plutus acoustical models, which is an update of the sound study that was provided in the application, because Huntley is starting to use electric-powered equipment for the completions phase that has shown a reduction in sound. That has been updated. I've provided a copy, I think, of Mr. Hamilton, I have one other one, if anybody else would like.
Mr. Hamilton, any objection to Exhibits 1 through 5?
Not at this time, no, thank you.
Mr. Ash, any objections to Exhibit 1 through 5?
Not at this time.
Mr. Bryce, any objection through Exhibits 1 through 5?
Is that in that little folder you gave me at the beginning?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Is that in that little folder you gave me at the beginning?
I can't.
I do not have copies of the exhibits. I do not have copies of the exhibits.
Mr. Youngker can provide them to you. Mr. Bryce?
I swerved it all with the three seconds I had.
Well, you can flip through and we'll reserve your right, but we'll move on at this time. If you see something in there that's a concern that you would like to object, just let me know, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Youngker?
Thank you. We have two witnesses to call this evening. The first will be Ryan Daley from CTC. Unfortunately, because we are in a new record, we'll have to go over some brief of background information here. Mr. Daley, can you please introduce yourself to the board again, and state your full name and spell your last name to the court reporter?
Sure. Ryan Daley, D-A-I-L-E-Y, a project manager with Civil and Environmental Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania.
And what was your role in this project?
I oversaw development of the application and submitted to the township.
And are you with CTC?
Yes.
Now, as part of your, after you prepared and submitted the application, did you have the opportunity to meet with the township engineer and prepare a supplemental response dated November 7?
Yes, we did.
And just to orient the board, was this a blow-up of the site?
That is correct. So, just to give you kind of an overview frame, on the left-hand side, this figure would be the Apollo B site, for your reference. So, this will be Nichols Hill Road, coming up here to Fallen Timber, and Fallen Timber runs in a eastern westerly direction over here to the intersection with Lightdale Road. So, Lightdale comes up from the town of Lightdale and snakes around out that direction. The Plutus well pad will be located to the west of the intersection between Fallen Timber Road and Lightdale Road. The access road, as Max mentioned earlier, is approximately 1,300 feet long, will come up the road to the well pad site, which will be located north of the McCall's residence. The Sido tank pad will be located to the east of the Plutus well pad access, coming from the, you know, the same access road. And this black line showing coming down here would be the pipeline that is included in tonight's application.
Are you familiar with the acreage for this property?
I believe the acreage is approximately 54 and a half acres for the McCall's.
And what is the current use of property?
So, current use would be, as you see on the aerial, a lot of open agricultural fields, some small areas of trees, wooded areas, and then the residence and associated outbuildings with the McCall's house.
And directing your attention to Tab 2, which is the site photo, can you orient the board to what this photo depicts in relation to the site plan?
Yes, so if you look at the bottom of the picture, coming from the left-hand side, you can see the road in the bottom left-hand corner, that would be Fallen Timber Road. The road that kind of makes the sharp U-turn in the center-left portion of the picture would be Lightdale Road. The access road would actually come off to the left of that intersection, so staying on Fallen Timber. And then if you, you know, go straight up the photo where that access road location would be, you can see the McCall's house and existing, you know, barn structures. The access road will go below those through the green field, kind of in a, you know, almost circular direction as shown on the overview, and then the well pad itself will be located behind the barns, kind of on the opposite side of the ridge.
Sure.
Yes. So, this is Fallen Timber Road. Access will be from this general area. The access road will come around here, and then the well pad itself will be located in this general vicinity. Yes. No, this is all we have tonight.
I'll just hold it up and try to pop it down and see.
Yeah, so as I was describing, this road over here would be Fallen Timber Road, the road, I guess, the road you can see that makes like the sharp U-turn here would be Lightdale Road. I guess, can everyone see this all right? So, the actual access drive will come off of Fallen Timber in, you know, this general vicinity, will come up through the McCall's field here below their house and barn, come around, you know, towards the top of the hill, and then the well pad itself will be located in this general vicinity, kind of on the backside of the ridge.
And perhaps, Ryan, if you can, you're using that photo that you showed everybody, indicating on the blow-up here, there are the features that are depicted in that photo.
Right, so, the small white objects I'm going to point to, those would be the barns that are located on McCall's property that correspond in this location on the photo. Lightdale Road, which is this road, actually follows, you know, in this location. And then, as I said, the actual well pad would be located, you know, on the backside of the ridge, which is shown, you know, by this, by this square over here. The Sido tank pad will be located kind of in this general vicinity, as shown by this rectangle over here.
And you mentioned agricultural fields and barns, and what is, is this a working farm currently?
That I'm not aware of.
And in terms of tree coverage, are there certain tree lines you can identify on this overview map?
So, there are a few isolated areas of trees within the project area. The majority of the trees around the property pretty much, you know, fall around the perimeter of the property, which we don't anticipate impacting those wooded areas.
So, no disturbance, no cutting down of those trees at the northwest?
Correct.
Now, as to the Plutus well pad, I'll try and focus on that first. Exhibit 3 in the binders is a letter, looks like offered by you, dated November 7, 2018, and it says a updated plan C-100. There's also reference, is this an enlargement of C-100?
Yes.
And what does this plan depict?
So, again, this depicts a closer overview of the site, indicating the distances from existing structures to the edge of the well pad and to the well pads themselves.
And in this letter, the November 7th included as Tab 3, or Exhibit 3, you included a conditional use project narrative update, but also Attachment B, conditional use plan. Is that where this blow-up is located?
Yes.
Okay, can you please describe anything else for this?
Right, so as I indicated earlier, it might be easier to see on this figure, the access road will come off of Fallen Timber, up to the well pad and to the Sido tank pad. The McCall's house, which you can see more clearly on this figure, is located in this general area. It's located approximately 716 feet from the edge of the well pad, which under the current ordinance is, exceeds the 500, or the 300-foot setback from edge of pad. The McCall's house is also 844 feet from the nearest well head, which exceeds the 500-foot setback. The next closest house would be to the east, it's located approximately 760 feet from the edge of well pad, and approximately 916 feet from the nearest well head.
And in the exhibit binders, at Patent C, to your letter, that is, looks like a well pad layout, is that an enlargement of this exhibit?
That is correct.
Can you explain to the board what equipment will be located on this well pad?
Correct, so, for starters, this will be the access road coming up here to the well pad. The well pad itself will be located, I guess, well pad itself will be very similar to other well pads you've seen in the area. The temporary construction job trailers and operation trailers will be located along this side of the pad with, you know, additional truck parking for passenger vehicles. The well heads themselves will be located near the center of the pad. The drilling equipment and fracking equipment, when in use, will be located, you know, enclosed approximately to the wells themselves. Additional, you know, large truck parking and truck turning will be located, you know, near the access road entrance to facilitate truck movements in and out. And then, once the, once the wells are drilled and completions are done, and they go into production, the production equipment will be located on, you know, this end of the pad. As far as other features on the well pad, we're proposing a two-foot-high earthen berm to go around the entire perimeter of the pad, both for safety reasons and for, you know, secondary containment. Additionally, we're proposing chain link fence to go the entire way around the pad with access gates for equipment that can be locked here for security purposes.
And when will that chain link fence be installed?
That will be installed after completions of the initial wells.
And so, all those, the layout for the trucks and for completions, that's all for the actual drilling and completions phase, is that correct?
Correct.
So, in terms of permanent features, once those phases are done, is that production equipment to the left-hand side of the drawing that you mentioned?
Right, so permanent features, you'll just have, you know, the well heads themselves, the production equipment, some GPUs to tie in the future pipeline, and the chain link fence around the perimeter.
Is there a plan to have a DI unit, a deoeration unit?
Most likely.
And how many wells are indicated on this?
There are eight wells included with this application.
In terms of produced water, are there tanks provided for that on the well site?
That's probably a better question for the operations, but I believe so.
Moving off of the Plutus pad and over to the Sido pad, did you provide, going back to that updated C-100, and this was also provided, as we mentioned before, as part of your response to the township engineer, can you depict for us some of the dimensions of the Sido pad?
Sure, so, again, this is the Sido pad in this area of the site. The access road will come off the same access as the well pad. Dimensions for the pad are approximately 300 feet wide by 425 feet long, similar to the well pad, there'll be an earthen berm around the perimeter of that site as well.
What's the topography of the site, you know, at this location for the Sido pad? Is that above the road or below the road?
So, this will be higher than Lightdale Road, so, again, it's kind of sits on top of a ridge line.
And the road is sort of the low point of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And what will the Sido pad be constructed of?
So, construction of the Sido pad will be, you know, similar to the well pad, it will consist of, you know, earthmoving to level pads, you're going to have some cut and fill. Once the pad's brought to final subgrade elevation, they'll bring in approximately a foot-thick section of gravel to place under the pad.
And we mentioned in the opening, and the application has been revised to remove the freshwater storage tank, so what is the proposed use of this pad in the interim?
So, in the interim, the pad will be used for equipment and material storage.
I know.
Correct.
Why are the Plutus and Sido being submitted together?
So, since they are similar uses and on the same site, they were permitted together through the DEP as part of the ESCGP 2 permit. One of the advantages to that from the environmental perspective is you can get multiple uses out of stormwater, best management fractures or BMPs. So, essentially, you can manage the site through the same stormwater ponds, which reduces your overall impact on the site, reduces your total disturbance, and ultimately provides for a, you know, a cleaner design on your site.
And would DEP allow you to permit these separately?
Their preference would be to keep them combined as a single permit.
Now, when we talk about ESCGP and DEP, do they have an oversight of this site?
Yes, yeah, they do an extensive review as part of the ESCGP 2 application.
Do they do inspections once you're done with construction?
They will do regular inspections during construction, as well as after construction, until the permit is closed out.
And they do the same for the Sido pad, you know, it's just a gravel pad with equipment on it?
Yes, yes.
Moving on to the third component of the application, the Plutus to Apollo pipeline, is that depicted on this enlargement or the original?
On the original C-101 enlargement.
Okay. Can you walk us through the direction and the purpose of this pipeline?
Yes, so, in order for Huntley and Huntley to get this gas to sale, they need to move it from the well pad. So, in order to do that, they're going to construct a pipeline, basically going from the well pad in a southwesterly direction. It will cross Fallen Timber Road and proceed down to a valve tie-in with the Apollo B to Dominion pipeline that was previously approved. The Apollo B... The Apollo B, just for reference, the Apollo B to Dominion Pipeline goes from the Apollo B well pad in a southerly direction, following, you know, parallel to Nichols Hill Road.
And what are the components of the pipeline? What would be?
Right. So, the pipeline right-of-way that's currently proposed and permitted through the DEP is a 10-inch steel gas pipeline, a 24-inch steel gas pipeline, a 16-inch temporary water line that will be above ground, and an 8-inch electrical or communications conduit.
Would that be buried or is that above ground?
That would be buried.
And the gas lines, are they buried?
Yes, both the gas lines would be buried. And all of these lines will be located within a 50-foot permanent right-of-way and with an additional 25 feet of temporary right-of-way for during construction.
And have those rigs away been secured?
To my knowledge, yes.
Did that portion of the project require an ESCG P approval from DEP?
Yes. And pipeline permits are usually considered separate from well pad permits through the DEP. So, we have an entirely separate ESCG P2 permit for the pipeline.
And same inspection requirements or are there different inspection requirements?
It would be the same inspection intervals and requirements, reporting requirements for stormwater events.
Now, since we've gone over the three components here, I wanted to talk a little bit about distances. You have C-100. And it looks like there are some setbacks depicted on there. I know it's hard for the rest of the audience to see, but can you explain to the board and the audience what the current ordinance requires in terms of setbacks and what would this proposal?
Right. So, as I mentioned briefly earlier, the current ordinance states that your well pad must be a minimum of 300 feet from an existing protected structure, and your wellheads must be 500 feet from an existing protected structure. As I mentioned earlier, the closest protected structure would be the McCall's house, which is the property that the entire project is located on. The edge of well pad is approximately 716 feet from their residence, which is farther than the 300-foot required setback. Additionally, they're approximately 844 feet from the nearest wellhead, which again is farther than the required 500-foot setback. The nearest neighboring property that would have a protected structure is to the east. It's approximately 763 feet from the edge of pad and approximately 916 feet from the nearest wellhead.
And so, this is an obvious question, but are the current requirements of the ordinance met by the site layout on the Plutus well pad?
Yes.
Now, we're orienting the board and everybody else on the actual site location and the three components of the application. How do we get there? Can you go over the access drive first and foremost?
Are you referring to the whole route?
First, it's just the access.
So, as I mentioned earlier, the access will come off of Fallen Timber Road, located just west of the intersection with Playthale and Fallen Timber. The access road is approximately 1,300 feet long, will be 24 foot wide. Ground will cover four. As far as, you know, stormwater design, along the access road goes, there'll be channels and culverts located along it to convey stormwater in a stable manner.
And what materials will it be constructed on?
Gravel, similar to the well pad.
How about the first 50 feet? Is there any proposal to pave it?
So, the first 50 feet will be paved asphalt coming off of Fallen Timber.
Now, in terms of the access drive, and once drilling starts, is there a plan for a security gate?
So, there will be security monitoring on-site 24/7 during drilling and completions operations. Following that, there will be a locked gate located near the bottom of the access road to prevent entry to the site.
And that's during the production phase and the wells are in production?
That's correct.
Now, that we've gone over the access route, can you describe for the board, I'm sorry, the access road, can you describe for the board the primary access route? I believe that's the enlargement you had right there.
So, the primary access route is shown on this figure, coming up from Interstate 70. Once you cross the river into Elizabeth Township, access is proposed on State Route 2020, which is Douglas Run Road, to State Route 2079, which is Nichols Hill Road, up Nichols Hill to Fallen Timber, and then east on Fallen Timber Road to the Plutus site.
And is that depicted in exhibit one N in the original application?
Yes.
Is State Route 2020, is that a posted roadway?
Yes, I believe so.
Are you familiar with any of those details in terms of the actual posting and what is required by?
So, yes. So, Huntley &amp; Huntley has posted the state routes that are required access to this site.
And Fallen Timber Road, is that a township road?
That is correct.
And that's not posted for a weight limit?
To my knowledge, no.
And what will this primary access road be used for?
This will be used for, you know, everyday traffic. You know, the majority of their trucking, we use this route. So, if they need to truck in water, if they bring in rock trucks, et cetera, during construction.
And the alternative access, like we talked about with Apollo B, is there an alternate route proposed for this location?
Yes. And it would be the exact same route as proposed for Apollo B. So, coming up from Interstate 70 on State Route 51 to State Route 48, up to Simpson Howell Road to Fallen Timber Road. And, you know, the alternate route for Apollo B stopped at Nichols Hill. This would continue along Fallen Timber Road to the Plutus site.
And that route map is included as attachment G to your letter that we've been going over here?
Yes.
What will the alternate access and alternate route be used for?
So, that will be used for oversized, large rig movements. So, and again, I believe Huntley would concede to the same conditions as they've adhered to on previous approvals with this route.
So, that would be vehicle escorts and flaggers?
Correct.
And video documentation of the rig conditions before and after use?
Yes.
Could this also be used in case of inclement weather or some closure of the primary?
I believe that would be the intent.
And would the notification made to the township for use of this alternate route?
Yes.
Now, going back, once we get to the site, is a highway occupancy permit required?
Yes, it will be. And since it's a township road, the HOP would be required from the township. The application was submitted and was included with this application.
And that was exhibit one O in the application?
Yes.
Now, there's also in the application mention of a stop sign plan. Attachment F to your letter, that's included in exhibit three, describes a stop sign plan. Can you explain to the commissioners as well as the public what that entails and where it is located?
Sure. So, for those of you who are familiar with the intersection of Nichols Hill and Fallen Timber Road, you know that there is a, it's a three-way intersection. There's currently a stop sign on Nichols Hill Road. The proposal would be to include a complete three-way stop along Fallen Timber and Nichols Hill. Basically, for safety concerns, I think if you've driven that road, you know the limited site distance coming along Fallen Timber. So, in, you know, in a measure of safety, the proposal would be to include stop signs at that intersection.
And that's for the primary route, not the alternate routes that we're talking about?
Correct, yeah.
And what is required in terms of getting those stop signs studied and approved?
Right. So, there's been a preliminary plan put together and submitted to the township. In order for that to get approved, since Nichols Hill is a state route, there requires Penn Dock coordination. And, you know, since Fallen Timber is a township road, it requires kind of like a joint effort between the township and Penn Dock. In order to move forward with the stop sign plan, we would need to conduct a traffic impact study at that intersection. And that requires, I believe, acknowledgement from the township for the intent.
And is HEC prepared to go through those steps and those requirements to perform that study and put these in place legally?
Yes.
One of the concerns that we always hear about the use of township roads and there are trucks going to be using them is school buses. Is there a plan to approach the school bus, coordinate the term, or the school district, and coordinate the calling times and any blackout periods or anything with buses?
I believe Huntley takes that into consideration when choosing their routes.
I wanted, we talked a little bit about the Erosion and Sediment Control General Permit II, the ESCG P2 submission. For those that are new to this process and members of the board who may not be familiar with it, can you explain the process that goes into applying to DEP, getting approval, and what that entails?
Right. So, the ESCG P2 permit goes through a very extensive review with the Department of Environmental Protection. It usually takes, you know, after we, the engineers, have sat down and done all of our environmental studies and, you know, conceptual site layouts and design, it usually takes us, you know, roughly a month to prepare all the documentation for the permit, as well as go through the steps of preparing all the calculations and doing the final ENS and stormwater designs.
And is that both for erosion control, you know, during construction and activities, as well as post-construction permanent facilities?
That's correct. So, the PA Code, Chapter 1 and 2, requires that you manage erosion and sedimentation during construction of your site until your site has been permanently stabilized with vegetation. So, we go through all the different phases and stages of construction, identify the ENS controls that need to be installed, such as compost filter sock, erosion control blanket, riprap aprons, culvert channels, et cetera. And then additionally, in Chapter 1 and 2, they require that your post-construction stormwater runoff rates, both for the two-year volume and the peak rates for the two-year, 10-year, 50-year, and 100-year storm events are managed so as not to cause excessive runoff after construction.
And are you familiar with the Notice of Intent checklist as part of that application process?
Yes.
Okay. And what does that entail? Let's start with erosion and sediment control. And what is a BMP?
Right. So, a BMP references the initial standard for best management practice. So, those are devices or procedures that can be put in place to manage erosion and sedimentation from the site. So, as I mentioned earlier, those include, you know, your compost filter sock, your erosion control blanket, culverts, channels, riprap aprons, et cetera.
And does this require a municipal notification?
Yes. So, Act 14 notifications get sent to any township within the project area, as well as the county.
And are you familiar with the name PNDI, P-N-D-I?
Yes.
What is that?
So, the PNDI is a Pennsylvania, so PNDI stands for Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Inventory. And basically, that is an online registry that we fill out a form, propagating all of our project information, location, size, you know, project description. And then, the PNDI tool runs through a database of threatened endangered species to identify if there's any concern with the project. So, it goes through Pennsylvania Game Commission, Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and Pennsylvania D.C.N.R. to identify any known threat that are endangered species.
So, it's a state and a federal?
Correct.
Okay. And did you go through that process for both the ESCG P2 for Plutus and Sido, and then the one for the pipeline?
Yes, we did. We did not receive any hits back.
And what does that mean, no hits?
That means there were, in the databases that it searches, there were no identified threat or endangered species.
And then, once you get done with the project and the post-construction stormwater management needs to go in, do you have a, I know we don't have a site plan showing perhaps the entire ENS controls or the stormwater, post-construction stormwater manager, generally identify where those would be located?
Right. So, because this site is split basically on two sides of a ridge based on the existing topography, there will be a sediment basin in this general vicinity during construction, which, following completion of construction, will be converted to an infiltration basin to serve as, you know, permanent stormwater control. In this area down here at the lower part of the access road, there will be another sediment basin during construction that will be converted to an infiltration basin following stabilization of the site. And then, to manage the lower portion of the access road, we also have an infiltration berm proposed, which is a very, you know, small feature, just to hold, you know, a small amount of water.
And are those likewise subject to inspection by DEP?
Yes.
And they are subject to DEP oversight even after drilling and completions and production is?
Correct. And even after the permit is terminated, there are long-term operations and maintenance requirements for the stormwater BMPs.
You record something in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate to identify the stormwater infrastructure and provide the operation maintenance plans?
Correct. As part of the notice determination for the permit, they're required to record locations and maintenance plans for stormwater features.
And that's where DEP continues to have access to the site?
Correct.
Where even future owners of McCall's sell the property, they have to buy that? Now, while we're talking about the environmental review and PNDI, does this project propose to disturb any wetlands?
No, it does not.
Any streams going to be disturbed?
No.
Is this a balanced site with regard to earthwork?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So, that means the cut and fills on the site generally are equal. So, whenever they go into level pad, they're going to have to, you know, cut part of the way down the hillside and then basically push that dirt over to the other side to level it out. So, a balanced site means that they don't have to bring in any extra dirt or take any extra dirt off the site.
Now, in terms of the application, is there a project narrative that's included explaining all phases of the activities on this site?
Yes.
And is that included as exhibit one B?
Yes.
And did you take part in drafting this narrative?
Yes, I did.
And did you, as part of this narrative, do you have essentially compliance comments, taking the individual portions of the ordinance and identifying how they will be met by this application?
Yes, we have.
And as part of the request from the township engineer, was there an updated narrative provided to reflect the conditions from the Apollo B approval, as well as the consent order?
That's correct.
And did you provide it as attachment A to your response letter?
Yes.
Okay. And were there any other changes as part of this? Did this discuss the Sido tank pad being removed from the application?
Yes. So, our initial application included the tank feature, but based on the current ordinance that has been removed from this application.
Now, in terms of schedule, obviously, these are always subject to change, but on page five, did you provide an updated schedule?
Yes. So, the anticipated start of construction would be in February of this coming year, assuming all approvals are in place at that time. Assuming that construction goes well, site gets finished this spring, they would anticipate drilling starting in April of this spring.
So, it's less than two months of the construction period for the access road, Plutus pad, and the Sido pad?
Correct.
Okay. And then, anticipated drilling is starting at what time?
Approximately in April this coming spring.
Okay. And then, that takes approximately under this schedule, about four months or so?
That sounds about right.
And then, once the drilling phase is complete, both vertical and horizontal for each of the eight wells, does that move into the completion and hydraulic fracturing stage?
Yes. So, the current plan, the completions would start next Yes, so the, the current plan, the completions would start next fall.
Next fall, okay. And how long do you think would that take under this schedule?
Uh, I think they would, the plan would be to be done by end of year, next year.
And if that does go as scheduled and the wells are completed, when could they go into production?
Ideally, it'd be like January of 2020.
And what is the estimated lifetime of a Marcellus well here in this area?
Uh, it can vary. I think my understanding is generally, you know, 50 to 60 years.
And at that point, it's only the production equipment still on the site?
Correct, at that point, once, once completions are done, it will just be the wellheads themselves and then the GPUs production equipment.
And a fence around the?
Correct.
Now, when we're talking about fencing and security, I know we briefly touched on the gate and everything else, but just so we're sure here, there will be a permanent gate on the access road testified?
Uh, yes, so after completions are, are done, there would be a permanent gate located at the bottom of the access road near the entrance.
And how often would HECs employee need to visit the production pad once it's in production?
Uh, not very often. I mean, it would be limited to, you know, a few trucks a week.
And when you say trucks, are we talking about?
Uh, pickup trucks, passenger vehicles.
In terms of first responder training, is that proposed to be undertaken for this particular site or has it already been undertaken?
Uh, I believe HECs can probably answer that better, but my understanding is one of HECs' standard protocols is to have first responder training at all of their facilities.
And as part of compiling the application, did you include a PPC plan as Exhibit one H?
Yes.
And what is that?
Uh, that's Pollution Prevention and Continuity Plan. That's a document that's prepared by Huntley, basically stating, you know, what they would do in the event of, you know, unforeseen circumstances arising on their site.
And there's also a master response plan included as Exhibit one I?
Yes.
Okay, and a site-specific emergency response plan as Exhibit one J?
Yes.
And an emergency response letter as Exhibit T.
Yeah.
Another feature of this site is lighting. In the hearing binder, Exhibit four, there is a photometric plan. Can you describe what this depicts?
Uh, sure, so during construction, drilling, and completions, we'll need to have temporary lighting on the well pad. So you're probably familiar with those temporary light stands, but they're basically like those self-generated facilities that have the lamppost that goes up and then, you know, a couple of light bulbs on top to shine down. At the request of the township engineer, we provided a photometric plan showing that we meet the requirements of the ordinance. The ordinance states that lighting from your site cannot exceed 0.2-foot candles at the property line. And as shown on these exhibits, we're at or below 0.2-foot candles around our property line.
And that's a peach phase depicted here?
Yes, we, we provided plans for all the different phases of operation.
And obviously, the permanent facility, is that the final plan here?
Yes, and even, even that is probably, you know, more light than there would be during actual production phase.
And that includes Plutus well pad?
Yes.
Are there any permanent lights proposed for Sido at this time?
Uh, no, no permanent lights.
So my questions for this witness? Mr. Hamilton? Questions for this witness?
Uh, yes, Mr. Goodness. Just for the record again, Ryan Hamilton, Barshay Environmental Legal Services, in behalf of Protect Elizabeth Township. Uh, Mr. Daley, how long have you been employed with CDC?
Uh, over five years now.
And prior to your employment with CDC, where were you employed?
Uh, I was employed at a local contractor during my years in college.
So you graduated college about five years ago?
Uh, yes, 2013.
And what was your degree in?
Uh, civil engineer.
Where'd you graduate from?
Uh, Pennsylvania State University.
Good school.
It's all right.
And Mr. Daley, you reviewed, I'm sorry, you were responsible for submitting this application to the township?
Uh, that's correct.
And you reviewed this entire application?
Yes.
And have you submitted similar applications for unconventional well pads in other situations?
Yes.
About how many unconventional well pads do you've been responsible for submitting these types of applications for?
I would say this is probably about my fifth application, just thinking offhand.
And you mentioned that there's three components to this site, right? A pipeline, a, we'll call it the gravel, Sido pad, and the Plutus pad, is that correct?
Yes.
And for the pipeline, does that route cross any floodplains?
Uh, it does cross floodways. I don't think there's any regulated floodplains that it crosses.
Just for the, can, can you describe for us the difference between a floodway and a floodplain?
Yeah, so a floodway for streams that are not studied by FEMA, that don't have a FEMA floodway associated with them, they're regulated by the DEP. The DEP has set out an assumed 50-foot floodway from top of bank of each stream. Now, floodplain as defined by FEMA would be all the area inundated by a 100-year storm event.
Thank you. And for the, where it crosses the floodway, are there any additional erosion control measures that are necessary there?
Uh, so any, anytime you're within 50 feet of a stream or a wetland, the DEP requires that you install erosion and control blanketing, which is, you know, not standard on, you know, all areas. It's specifically a requirement for within floodways.
And along that pipeline route, are there some relatively steep slopes along that route?
Uh, shouldn't be more specific, relatively, relative to what? Do we talk about 10%, 15%?
I can rephrase the question if that makes sense.
That's fine, yeah, go ahead and rephrase.
Mr. Daley, what's the slope of the hillsides along that pipeline route?
Uh, the general slopes along the pipeline route range between 20 and 30%.
In your opinion, as a civil engineer, is that pretty steep hillside?
Uh, in terms of pipeline projects, I've worked on a lot of projects that are much steeper than that.
Okay. And are there any additional measures that are necessary for construction on those 20 to 30% slope hillsides?
Uh, so generally, you know, when you're restoring a slope like that, you want to take extra precautions to make sure that, that, you know, your, your slope is stable. A lot of times, that includes subsurface drainage features, which, you know, are installed during construction. As far as, you know, the pipeline trench itself, there will be trench floods that get installed at certain increments along the pipe. That basically prevents water from, you know, running down the, the pipe itself, which provides extra stability. And then on the surface, there will be what are called water bars. So that's an ENS BMP specifically for linear projects. If you've walked, if you ever walked a pipeline, you've probably seen them, but they're basically just like, you know, a little mound of dirt that they use to direct water off the pipeline right away.
And all of those measures that you just described, those will be incorporated in this pipeline construction?
Uh, yes.
And has a geotechnical investigation been conducted for this pipeline route?
Uh, so following the planning commission's meeting last week, CEC sent a geotechnical engineer out to do a geo-hazard assessment along the route, so we completed that this week.
Has that been submitted to the commissioners for their review?
Uh, it has not.
Uh, the pipeline route also includes, I think you mentioned, several stream crossings and road crossing. About how many stream crossings are there?
I believe there's three, yeah, three stream crossings.
Those stream crossings, they're permitted by the DEP, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And what's required for that stream crossing? What does that construction process look like?
So generally, the construction process would be to install a timber mat bridge, which would be used for equipment to cross the stream without, you know, driving through the actual stream. So the timber mat would span top of bank, top of bank, allow the stream to continue flowing underneath it while the equipment, you know, traverses above it. When they get to actually installing the pipeline itself, generally, they'll install sandbag dams upstream and downstream of the crossing, install a pump to pump the stream basically around their work area. And then whenever they have the, you know, the stream bed dried out in between, they'll remove the stream substrate, kind of set that off to the side so they can replace it later, dig their trench, lay their pipeline down in it, backfill the trench, and then replace the stream substrate to basically put it back to existing conditions, stabilize the bank with erosion control blanket, and then remove the pump and sandbag dams.
Approximately how long does that type of process take for, for one crossing?
I would say, I mean, generally, they do it in a day.
There's some issues with the permit.
Right. Right. Right, so, so generally, I think in this instance, will be, you know, in under a day. But it's also to the advantage of the contractor to, you know, get in and get it done as quickly as they can so they're not constantly running out, you know, of pump.
And for these crossings, have the permits already been obtained from the department?
Yes.
And were those, were copies of those permits provided to the commissioners?
I believe they were provided in the supplemental letter dated. Right, in attachment E.
You're sorry, in attachment E?
Yes, so in the letter dated November 7th to the township engineer, attachment E, section three, or the Chapter one and five, General Permit five and eight.
Thank you. And you said there would be one roadway crossing, is that correct?
Yes, of fallen timber.
On fallen timber. And generally, how's that construction process? How's that completed?
As I say, so, so this one will be by conventional ore. So with, outside of the township right away, they'll dig down a ore pit, install their, or set their drill, their bore rig, and then bore the pipeline under the road so there'll be no disturbance to the, the road surface.
Is the roadway closed traffic while that occurs?
No, not usually.
Regarding the actual Plutus well pad site, has a geotech investigation been completed there?
Uh, yes, it has.
And has that been provided to the township?
Uh, to my knowledge, the geotechnical report is not provided. However, the geotechnical improvements such as tow keys and drainage were included on the ENS plans that were submitted to the DEP.
Has underground mining been identified at the site?
Uh, to my knowledge, not that I'm aware of.
To, to your knowledge, yeah, let's write that. You, you mentioned the lighting plan?
Yes.
And there's different, I'm gonna call it different plans for different phases of development, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And could we turn to the lighting plan for the drilling phase? But the, these exhibits, were they updated submissions from what was originally submitted with the conditional use application?
So the original application just showed the locations of the proposed temporary light stands. At the recommendation of the engineer, they requested that we provide a photometric plan, which is what we've provided here with the update.
And do we have those original designs in the application here still?
Uh, they should be, yes.
And Exhibit one P, as in Apollo.
Could we turn to Exhibit one P? And we could flip to the, the drilling lighting plan? Mr. Daley, this identifies this site as the Titan well pad. Is this the correct plan or is that a typo?
Uh, that would be a typo in the title block. The, the information shown on the plan itself is correct for the Plutus well pads.
Okay. And on, on that drilling lighting plan, one of the components that's identified is a flare stack, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I see that.
And will flaring be occurring at this site?
Uh, that would be a question for Huntley.
We could turn to the production lighting plan. The, the production phase, that's what you described, it's sort of a long-term phase, the 50 or 60 years, is that correct?
Right.
And this lighting plan identifies several different types of equipment that would be on that site during that phase, is that right?
Right.
And there's production tanks. What are those production tanks used for?
Uh, HECs can probably explain that a little better, but to my knowledge, that's, you know, as, as gas is coming out of the wells, before they put it online and go through their pipeline to put it to market, they send it through a series of processing stages and remove the material that they don't want to send through the, the pipeline.
It also identifies dehydration units. Can you describe the purpose of those?
Uh, similarly to the other ones, you know, it just takes any moisture off of the, the gas before they put it to market.
Also mentions gas processing units. What does that refer to?
Uh, so those are also known as GPUs. Those, so each, each wellhead will be tied into its own gas production unit. And similarly, that's just like the first phase of processing.
So all, all this equipment will remain on the site for the long-term production phase?
Yes.
And are there, are there any air emissions associated with this equipment?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but Huntley can speak to that.
You can answer that, though.
Correct.
We're gonna move on to the Sido tank pad. You, you mentioned that the site as a whole is sort of split across a ridge, is that right?
Yes.
So the Sido pad is on one side of the ridge?
So the, the ridge line kind of runs in this kind of general, you know, direction. Sido's kind of on top of that ridge line, the Plutus well pad's on the, the backside of that ridge line.
And if I'm standing on the Sido tank pad, what's the approximate elevation there?
Uh, you mean like the difference in elevation? Or, okay, I believe the approximate elevation here is generally around 1,000 feet above sea level.
Okay, and if I travel sort of northwest-ish, I would run into the access road, is that right?
Yes.
And about what's the elevation of the access road?
Uh, offhand, I don't remember, but it is higher than the tank pad in this location.
Okay, and if I keep traveling in that northwestern lead sort of direction, I hit the Plutus pad, what's the difference in elevation there?
Uh, offhand, I, I don't remember the elevation of this, but I would, I would guess, my recollection, probably between 15 and 20 feet difference in elevation.
Being higher.
Uh, this being higher than, yeah, than Sido.
Okay. And when stormwater hits the Sido pad, which direction is it going to be flowing?
So the Sido tank pad stormwater will drain in this direction towards the access road. The access road as well will drain kind of with a central location at that corner of the pad. From there, it will be piped into the BMP, the stormwater BMP that I referenced earlier, which is located kind of in this area.
And what about stormwater for the Plutus pad?
So stormwater- So stormwater for the Plutus pad will drain in this direction to the, again, the BMP that I referenced earlier that's kind of located here. Stormwater from basically the high point in the access road will drain down around and be culled into that same stormwater basin. The upper part of the access road near the Plutus well pad will drain into the, the basin below that.
So the Sido pad and the Plutus pad, the stormwater from those sites drains opposite directions, is that right?
Yes, yeah, but the access road to the Plutus well pad is included within the same drainage area as the Sido pad.
And in terms of the stormwater control plan, is that, that access road is the, I guess, the physical connection?
Uh, I guess where you're referring to as far as stormwater connection.
Well, is, is there a connection between stormwater controls that are used for the Sido pad and those used for the Plutus pad?
Yes, so, so there's a single basin located down here that the Sido tank pad and the access road will both drain into. Now, they'll drain into the basin through separate stormwater systems, so different culverts are gonna discharge water into that basin, but it will be a single basin, and then the lower portion of the access road will be controlled by a separate infiltration berm.
So separate systems both feed into the same basin?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, in order to change that design or construct those separately, revision would need to be made to the ENS permit, is that right?
Uh, the DEP would likely require modification.
And, and Huntley and Huntley has not approached the DEP about that modification?
Uh, no, that's not there, ten.
Mr. Hamilton, do you have a lot more, because I think there's people trying to take a break.
Uh, I do have quite a few other questions.
Okay, let's, why don't we take a break, take a five-minute break at this time, we want to stretch, and then we'll come back and just take up some more.